I'd like to call to order the September 8, 2015 Board of Trustees meeting, the KCKCC. I'd like to call the meeting to order it and ask Abby Dillard to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary of Labor calling.
Trustee Ash, Trustee Rydell.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Trustee Flunder.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Here.
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
Move the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Audience to patrons and petitioners, anyone wishing to speak to the board this morning. Please state your name and we're only allowing five minutes for speakers this morning, so I'll ask the secretary to keep time.
Duane Shaw, Wyandotte County taxpayer. Last board meeting, I talked about my forty-seven years here at the college and my unexpected termination. That may have been a blessing because my wife is not in good health and I'll have more time to spend with her. And also that gives me an opportunity to do what many people have said that needs to be done. Someone needs to speak up and let this board know what is happening here at the college. Employees will not speak up because of their fear of losing their job. Well, I lost mine, so I guess I'm that person to speak up. This is a great college, has some great programs and some great employees. Again, I want what is best for this college. If terminating me was a benefit for this college, then that's what I want, but I doubt that that is the case. Now, everyone is aware of the state's financial situation, funding, education. With that in mind, why have we done what many considered unnecessary construction? The president's office and the HR office used to be beautiful. Now it's walled up, taking away from the openness of our campus. Why have we purchased so much new furniture? Why the new, why all the new high-dollar jobs after the firing of Brian Bodie? It appears that three people have been hired to replace him at high-dollar salaries. Several new positions have been created in HR. New director, starting at a hundred and twenty-some thousand plus, which is considerably more than the last director. She also has a executive secretary or assistant at forty-seven thousand. New positions as fleet supervisors have been created. New positions at a wellness center. Are we really addressing the financial situation? Why did we spend a couple thousand, hundred thousand dollars on track equipment and then cancel the track program? Why are employees getting paid and they don't even have a job description? Concerns that people have is why are we not going through the proper procedures for hiring a personnel? It seems we're circumventing the rules by bringing in interims and not opening up the jobs. Why are we terminating personnel with no just cause and again, not going through the proper procedures? Why are so many from a local church suddenly being hired? Is this an indirect way of helping the funding of that church? Why are supervisors and directors not being involved in decisions being made in their department? Why does the president not respond when staff personnel ask to speak with her about issues of the college? There's several comments that I was going to bring out, but because of Tahut, I'm going to eliminate those. Many of them are very negative about our president and the HR process. Were background checks done when the interims, before the interims were hired? Why did Dr. Lindell leave Johnson County Community College? Why did she leave Baker University? Why did Abby Dillard lead her last job? Why do we have an administrator who has been arrested? How can we justly justify departments going through the proper procedure of getting applicants, doing interviews, making recommendations to HR for hiring, only to have HR hire someone else? If we are doing things properly, why do we need a full-time attorney at a salary in excess of a hundred and forty thousand plus benefits? Nothing against our attorney, we need him, but it's just the way things are being done. Why have we created the new positions in HR and why the high salaries? Is it because we are taking care of friends at the church? These actions that I have addressed are causing much mental stress on employees, not knowing if they'll have a job at the end of the day. Because of these working conditions, employees are leaving unhappy. As a result, this is leaking into the community. People in the community have put trust in those of you elected to the Board of Trustees. You took an oath to represent the taxpayers. For the first time in forty years that I can remember, many people in the community, as well as the college, are disappointed in what you have allowed to happen. I hate to see this because you have dedicated a lot of time and effort to make this college what it is. We do appreciate what you have done and hope that you will in the future do what is best for this college. I understand the last board meeting, what minutes were pulled from being shown on TV and cable.
Sir, your time is up.
Okay, in closing, I and many others believe that-
Your time is up. Thank you.
I spent forty-seven years here and I can't have enough time to finish another one minute or so.
I'd like to move on with the meeting, please. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Okay, communications. The student senate president is here. Andrika.
Hi, good morning, everybody. I apologize. Na'Shawn Thomas had something unexpected happen, so he wasn't able to attend this morning. But in his absence, I would just like to do a brief overview of what student activities has done, if that's okay with the board. Is that all right? Okay, awesome. Just one of the really cool things is the student morale and the presence of our students on campus has been absolutely phenomenal since we started on August seventeenth. We, the game room, have seen, has seen about approximately five hundred students from the day we started school. And our student center has been just awesome. I would just encourage everyone to come down and just check it out. We've got students sleeping in the, on the couches, which we kind of had before, but it's kind of really cool because now that all, they're like out there and you can see them. They're, they're just hanging out, they're, they're charging their phones, they're, they're playing games, they're just really doing some really cool things, just being students. So it's just a really, really fun time. And even the game room has been just full of students and they're just busy with activities and stuff in there. So, and our students, we found out, really love Uno, by the way, over pool. Uno versus pool, I'm just saying. Anyway, so it's been really cool. On August twenty-eighth, we hosted our Welcome Back Bash and Club Rush, and I want to thank all of our Kansas City, Kansas Community College clubs and our departments and our community organizations that were here. There were over fifty booths at the bash, and if you attended that, you would have seen how awesome it was. Our students stayed, and not only did they stay, but when the bash was over with, they still stayed at the college. They were hanging out in the Jewel Center, they were down in the game room, and it was just pretty cool just to see them. And that was a Friday, by the way, so that was just awesome for them to hang out. On September third, we had our evening reception for our evening students and we provided a dinner for them. We served about a hundred and twenty-five students, that included students from our tech center, which was really cool. Welding came, some computer classes came, and so it was just neat to have them on campus. And then we're going to do something a little different, we're going to add a little something with our students. If they won't come to us, we're going to go to them. And so you'll see something in October that student activities is going to be doing specifically for our evening students again. September ninth, mark your calendar, we want you to attend our second, actually our first student senate meeting, which will be downstairs in Lower Jewel. So please come join us, it'll be at two fifteen and it'll go to about three. Feel free to come, and this is the opportunity that our students want to just receive from you all, the leadership skills that you guys have, you know, comments. This is a way for you to see what's going on in our students, organizations, their, their leadership roles that they have on our campus. And so what a great time for you guys, everyone, to connect together. Last year, it was great to have some of you all there at the meetings, and it really opened up some doors, I think, for our students. So welcome back and come back to, to our senate meetings. Let's see, we've got some events coming up. September tenth, we have our first KCKCC movie night. We're going to have a kid-friendly movie, starting at five-thirty, and we're also going to have then shift to more of a college-age movie at seven-thirty at the Performing Arts Center. We also have our, ready, our first KCKCC Spirit Squad tryouts that night, from five to ten. They'll have a clinic and then they'll have a tryout. So if you want to just come see, it'll be in this room, they're going to be dancing and cheering and chanting and all that, and we have, our local administrators are Tony and some other, or they'll be our judges. So we're really excited. We've got over thirty people who have signed up who want to try out for the Spirit Squad. So it's really cool. September fifteenth and sixteenth is our student senate elections. So if you, this would be really great for us. We're always looking for some new ideas and some new things. If you have some ideas about elections, you know, this is our first time for our students to kind of be doing things like this, some, you know, communication ideas or anything like that, we would love to hear that from you all. But that'll be, we've got several people who are pulling, getting applications for our student senate vice chair, treasurer, secretary, activities chair and that kind of thing. So please let us know if you have those ideas, we'd love to hear those from you. And then our KCKCC athletics, have you guys been seeing our soccer teams? Yes, they're doing great, absolutely great. Our men are three and O, phenomenal, you should give them applause, by the way. Really good. Our women are two and O, and they have their upcoming games, home games on September tenth to September fifteenth, here right here on our field versus Allen County and Garden City. And our volleyball team is doing well, they're three and six, they're a brand-new group, so they're, they're getting there. So Mary's doing a wonderful job with them, and they've got two home games, September sixteenth and September thirtieth here on our campus, so come join us. And then our golf team, if you have nothing to do on a Sunday, I'm just saying, and you like to travel out, they are going to be playing at Booneville versus Central Methodist College. So if you like golf, you're just going to hang out, come join our golf team that night or that day. So anyway, that's all I have for you. Do you have any questions?
You want to have any questions?
It's a lot.
You say September the fifteenth to the sixteenth, at what time?
We're going to be doing it throughout the day, so I'll, we'll email us if there's a specific time that they want to do it, but it's usually pretty much through the day. Downstairs in the deli, we have the booth, the box for voting and ballots and that kind of thing.
And the volleyball game, is it what time?
Volleyball game that, that day, Tony, can you help me out on that? Is that a five o'clock game, September fifteenth? No, September sixteenth, it's home versus Allen County.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
And the soccer?
Soccer games, they have a couple different times. September tenth?
Mm-hmm. And the fifteenth?
Four-thirty, September tenth, is the girls play first and the men follow. And then the fifteenth?
Same time.
Same time, four-thirty. Girls start and then the men follow after that.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you. President's report.
Why was she allowed to speak more than five minutes and I was cut off?
What I have are just the dates for events that are coming up, that it would be great for all of us to attend and support. On tomorrow, September the ninth, we'll have the grand opening and open house at the KCKCC Pioneer Center in Leavenworth. It's from five to seven, and the address is nineteen oh one West Spruce. And it would be wonderful to see all of your faces there because it is a wonderful place for our students to learn and to develop skills so that they can go to work, and it would be good to just come and support and, and see what's going on there. It's quite a change from the old location, and we're pretty proud of that, and the work that's been done there by all of the, the team that established that institution for us. So thank you to all of them, and you'll get a more, more exciting thank you on tomorrow at the event. When Mr. Maddox and Mr. Ash will be attending the KACC meeting at Cloud Community College on the eleventh through the twelfth, I think that's Friday and Saturday of this week. Then there'll be the NACT entrepreneurial conference in Houston, Texas. And there'll be people from the college going there. Alicia heads that group, she's over the entrepreneurial area on campus, and she will be going. The ACCT conference will be in San Diego, and Mr. Maddox, Mr. Rios, Don Ash, and I will be attending the ACCT conference in San Diego, October fourteenth through seventeenth. So those are the events that are up and coming, and that's my report.
All right. Need a motion to accept the president's report?
No move.
Second.
Move the second to accept the president's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Let the record show that trustee Townsend stepped out and wasn't part of the vote. He should be back in about ten minutes. Vice presidents for Academic and Student Services.
Okay, you have my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions, if there are any. If not, I ask for your approval.
Move for acceptance of the vice president's report?
Second.
So move the second to accept the vice president's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Chief Financial Officer.
I would like to report that our annual audit is underway and we're ahead of schedule, and hope to have, our goal is to have the books closed in a best practice timeline. We are on target for that. Also to, to bring everyone up to date, that we're going to be offering budget workshops again. We had some in the spring, we're going to have some on how better to run reports in the budget, access the budget, again, for budget transparency for our deans and directors and assistant directors. So we will be offering those again this fall in Information Services. Also, as far as the benefits go, we just finished entering, and I want to certainly thank the payroll, Jan Hare and Robin as well, for entering each and every one of the employees here into the system with the new payroll and benefits data. So that was quite an accomplishment to have that done in a check and balance system. So we certainly do thank them, and would also like to take just a moment to recognize the e-purchasing implementation, and if it would be appropriate, we'd like to have Dr. Baz bring us up to date on that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me a couple minutes to talk to you about e-purchasing. E-purchasing is a module that is part of our enterprise resource planning system that we had started the implementation back in two thousand and seven. E-purchasing by itself has started in February of this year, and one of the things that e-purchasing will bring into this organization is it brings fiscal accountability in ways that were never known to KCKCC before. So we started the implementation back in February. A lot of individuals from across campus were involved in the implementation from different function areas. I would like to recognize few of them, and I also have Rachel with me here, so she can show you some of the efforts that had been put in place to ensure the successful implementation of e-purchasing. But obviously, it is campus-wide implementation. It was led by the business office and the finance side with support from Information Services. So I cannot go far without recognizing Marie Branster and her staff, and also David Root and Information Services. I would also like to recognize, sure, their effort had been instrumental. I don't believe that this project would have been a success, a successful project without their implementation. When we started in February two thousand and fifteen, I'll be frank with you, we didn't think that we will be completed with this implementation by July first to meet the start of the fiscal year. It was very impressive, we completed it, and the training is ongoing. Obviously, when we have new component put in place like this, we have to continue to train faculty, staff on how to use it so it properly is utilized to ensure the fiscal responsibilities that we have been talking about. I have Rachel here with me. She put together training packets and also have scheduled ongoing training for faculty and staff, and we send out emails regularly to invite faculty and staff to participate in these training sessions, and I would like to recognize Rachel and have her speak to you about this, that effort. Rachel.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm going to hand you guys the packet. One of it is just a synopsis of what we've done, and the other is the training materials that I provide. So I was asked to be involved in this in May. I attended some of the training sessions that we had with Alution. Based off those training sessions and then having access to the system, I created manuals that included screenshots and step-by-step instructions for the faculty and staff on campus. Since we had a date of July sixth for going live with the system, we provided ten sessions in June, nine sessions in July, and eight sessions in August. And again, like Baz says, we will have more in September and October, and those dates will be forthcoming. So what we do is a thirty-minute demonstration over what the system is. We go over the six different forms that they're going to use. So we look at the inner requisition for goods and services, we show them how to put in when they have a quote or need to order supplies, how to put that form in. We look at how to view, modify, and delete those requisitions that they've submitted. We also look at how they go in and check in the items that they get through the receive goods and services form. We then have them look at the request for payment form, which is what they use to reimburse themselves or to pay a vendor when they've been invoiced. And then they can also look at any history that they've done through the view, modify, and void request for payment module area. And the last part, we show them, for those that do, there's only a handful that have approval rights, but those that approve these requisitions and vouchers, we show them how they go through the system to approve them. And then we also show individuals how they can check the status, whether it's been approved or if it's been ordered yet. Right now, we've had a hundred and forty-five participants come through the trainings, and then in addition, we offer them support, saying if they need to have assistance putting a requisition in, that they can contact David Root or myself. And so far, we've had thirty-one people either come in for one-on-one assistance or have follow-up assistance with putting in a requisition. Any questions that you guys have?
I have one question.
Is there a dollar limit that certain individuals have?
Yes, there are dollar limits. Do you know the exact ones, Baz?
Well, I don't know the exact ones, but there are certain dollar limits with each budget manager. So you can submit a request for purchase, but it would not be fulfilled or it would not be turned into a requisition really unless you have approval from the second approver. Do you know the numbers? I don't know the exact-
The ultimate number that goes to the board is, is just under ten thousand. It's nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars above that it goes to the board. But there are approval levels for directors and deans and then the vice presidents, so it is, it's very much, the beauty of this is that it's tracked within the system and the reports are produced within the system. So we're able to be sure that each one of those is, to your point, covered, you know, and approved at, at the correct level.
And no requister would be able to make a requisition over their budget. There have been incidents in the very, very far past where people requested to purchase something and they didn't have the budget for it. That is not the case anymore.
First of all, I'd like to, on behalf of the Finance Committee, Rachel, appreciate very much your efforts in training the staff. Finance Committee has been very determined that, just to what Baz spoke to, we can't have our financial house out of order. We need to know where every dollar is going and how it was thought even to spend, and then through the appropriate channels. So we are tracking our expenditures much more closely than we ever have, and this system has made it possible to get reports in a very timely fashion. But again, reports are only as good as the individuals that are able to manipulate the system. And so that makes your efforts very valuable to this campus, and I thought it was very important that my fellow trustees hear from you. Do have just a couple of questions. One, are you receiving any feedback on your training? Are you allowing for some kind of survey of the participants to know if all of their needs were met or?
No, I didn't do a survey with this one. Usually I do, but because this one was campus-wide, we didn't have a survey. But we do get some feedback with those that contact us later, so I can kind of tell those that need assistance in an area or that maybe I didn't explain something clear enough by the feedback from those that email me and have questions with follow-ups.
Okay.
And, and we certainly can add those feedback forms at the end of the sessions going forward, so that's not a problem. I think that's a great idea.
I think so, just so that we would know if more training, more support from the board be necessary. That would be very helpful. Now, you say you have trained a hundred and forty-five, what is the target? Which, at the end of this, how many folks should be trained?
It's actually up to each individual division department. Some departments on campus, I've found, want the director to submit the requisitions, others want their support staff to do it. So it's just been emailing out all employees, all full-time staff, full-time faculty, and then sometimes we have issues with rights. Not everybody has been given rights to the system, so that's where a follow-up is done, where they contact their dean and then go through either sure for staff record rights or through the business office for roles assigned rights and budget account numbers assigned to their login.
But we don't really have an end date to where we will end this type of training. This training will become part of the professional development that we will work with HR on, so it is regularly offered as part of refreshers and part of orientation for new staff and faculty members as they become important.
Great, yes, that's very important. I guess I just want to make sure, because some people, I think, think there's a mystery to how, how things operate around here, and so the more open that we're just to what the process is, whether they have the absolute rights to go in, and I don't know that that's the significant thing. I think what's important is the communication, the openness of that, well, here, this is the process. So if you're not understanding why, where your request is or something like that, well, if they know the process, then, you know, this could hopefully help in understanding and improve communication. And as we are aware, we have had ongoing concerns about communication. In the eleven years I've been on this board, it's always come up in our climate survey. And so these trainings are one way to address, and saying, well, you know, learn the processes. And that, and even if you don't have, at least you know what the processes are and who's, has those rights or authority. And I think that, again, would be helpful. So maybe for, it's a different- So, maybe it's a differentiated training from the ones that do have, I would understand. But just that kind of understanding, I would hope that we would find a way to allow for, accommodate for those who would take that initiative to participate.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Baz, on the request, is it just for the computers and software or when they need something else and another department don't have anything to do with this, do they still gotta send the request through here?
Yes, yeah. This is a general requisition system that you can use to purchase.
For everything that we buy.
Anything and everything that you want.
Okay. And all of it goes to the business office if it's over $10,000?
Well, there's a workflow. There's a workflow based on the approver rights on the system. So, if it is less than $500, they can purchase it. If it is $2,000, it goes to the next approver and the next approver goes to the next approver. But all of them end in the business office and obviously, anything that is above the $10,000 flag, it comes to the board.
Okay, so, you're saying if it's $200, it goes to you?
I'm using that as an example.
I know, but it'll go to you. And if I want $5,000 to go to her? Is that what you're saying?
No.
No, let me, let me explain, Ms. Blender. I think what it is, is if, if a director wants to submit a request for purchase of something and whether that request is a dollar or $2,499, that request goes to the director's next level of supervisor, which in most cases is a dean. Under $2,500, the deans can approve up to that $2,499 amount. If the requisition is over $2,499 but less than $9,999, all that's needed is either my approval or Dr. Lindahl's approval, depending upon who that dean reports to. If it's above $10,000, then it goes to the President's office.
Okay, I got you.
But every, every request for purchase has to be approved by a second level of approval. If I wanna buy something for $10, it goes to the President's office because she's my immediate supervisor. And if a dean wants to purchase something for $10,000, you know, any amount, it goes to me and then either to the President or for referral to the board.
In that process, I know Marie Branster was very involved in that, as were other members of the business office, but it was a campus-wide discussion and it's campus-wide purchase. Again, as Dr. Vitale said, it's, it's not just for Information Services, it is campus-wide. And it will allow us, again, to go into our system and pull reports so that, you know, to Trustee Rios' comment, we're able to be more accountable and more transparent in what we do purchase and the accountability for purchasing.
Well, again, appreciate your efforts and everyone that was mentioned and, well, frankly, everybody in the room here. Very much appreciate your cooperation with the new system, the new processes as we try to be very accountable for every dollar that we're spending, not just local tax dollars but the state and student fees. It's very important and I know change can sometimes ruffle feathers, but at the end, if we can look people in the eye and know that we are being very credible in what we are trying to do for this institution and for our students and community, then the better off that we are. So, I appreciate you very much.
I got one more question. We still do the reimbursement, like if I buy something and turn in my bill, do I still get it back?
Yeah, still has to go through.
As long as you have a receipt, that is a valid receipt, we will reimburse you, yes.
As long as it is over $10,000.
Thank you. I guess, just in closing to that, I'd like to also point out that as part of our budget, training and budget workshops, all of our budget slides are available on the website and they're on the webpage, the CFO/COO webpage. So, again, to be very transparent and to tie that to our strategic plan, we do make that available to everyone and we've shown it at the workshops. And as I've said, if you're having trouble sleeping at night, it's available for your review. And so, we would invite you to take a look at that. Next, I do have as part of our consent agenda, those items 1 through 9. Yes, sir, yes.
Are you going to item 9?
Yes.
We have approved your CFO report.
Okay. Okay.
Ask approval for the CFO report.
No move.
Thank you.
Move the second to accept the CFO's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carry.
So, item 9 is approval of the finance report and August bills and that amount is $2,605,727 and that includes our Visa bill listing, which is also in the report of $151,809.
Any question on the finance?
The Finance Committee has reviewed and requests approval.
Need a motion to approve the finance report?
No move.
Pay the bills?
No move.
Oh, we got a motion. You need a second? Okay. We have moved the second to accept the finance report, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carry. Report from committees, any committee reports?
Well, just one thing on the electrical use. This was the first time in two years that we actually had a lower cost in the month. So, I think that should be noted.
You moved too fast.
Yeah, I should've asked.
So, you know, it's leaving me somewhat optimistic that, that our investment, because again, I do understand when, you know, some costs and sometimes when people look at our capital projects, they don't seem to make sense. But the whole thing is in trying to think long-term in regards to long-term savings. There're gonna be a cost upfront, but then what about in the three, five, 10 years? And also trying to conserve energy and be good stewards of that also is something that we need to, I believe, attempt the best we can in these trying times financially to uphold. And we continue to have lower usage rate and now, for the first time, we've actually had some true cost savings. So, hopefully, that will continue and we, of course, every month, will can always update you and whatever that picture is, is what we'll reveal to you. But it was good, very good news this month.
Thank you, Trustee Rios. Now, moving on to reports of committees, any committee wishing to report. Hearing none, I understand that we have the executive session on the agenda, but there's no need for an executive session, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Before we adjourn, I'd like to say this and I hope I can speak on behalf of the board. We trust and we support our President. I know that there are times when changes have to be made and I believe that she has exhibited extreme wisdom and extreme courage to make those decisions. So, I just wanted to say that. We're here for the students and to hear a report from Andrika, that's what thrills the board, that's what we wanna hear. So, I wanna say that as your chairman and I wanna make sure that it is clear and well-known that we support our President. As for a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second?
Move the second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carry. Good job.